Welcome, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Finance Committee and the Select Board for Thursday, January 18th for our second budget hearing. I'm going to start with open forum. Does anyone have anything that they would like to ask that isn't on the agenda? Okay, the one thing that I'm going to add is at the beginning of each budget hearing, we're going to do a little mini recap of what Finance Committee members heard from or decided from the last meeting. So, a few ideas or a few things that I heard at the last meeting, and you guys, you know, see, you know, nod if you agree, or if you are missing, probably not missing anything. A few things I heard were some current concerns about positions that are open now, and whether we, if they've been open for a long time, do we really need them going forward? Or if they're, if they're part-time going full-time. Some of, some smaller budget items such as, you know, maintenance, maybe meetings and conferences that didn't seem to be budgeted based on actuals, just kind of look at and see if we can tighten those up. A few questions on seasonal staff and whether we really needed them, and library hours, and possibly removing the Sunday hours to reduce that a little bit. And then we had a pretty long discussion about REC Enterprise, which will, will be coming back.
Do you have a date for that yet?
We do not, no. Anyone, did I miss any major topics? I mean, we'll, we'll do this at the end also, but just to kind of, sure, Dennis?
I just, we just, one, one thing I thought was interesting was with regard to the water enterprise. They, we discussed contracts with them, and they had mentioned that they do a one-year contract with an extension. I thought that was something we may want to look at as well, as a policy.
We'll add that to the list as well.
I think I had that on my list as well, so.
Yeah, I think so.
So, we also talked, we also talked about long-term planning for trash handling, how we want to do it.
Okay, good. If you guys just want to send, send me an email with, with these, and I'll, I'll collect the list of them. Okay, Select Board members, anything? Nothing? No, okay.
More than one?
I don't think any.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we will go on to our 7:05 agenda item, and our introduction and review of the budget issues by Kristin Los.
Good evening, everyone. This is our second session of the Finance Committee public hearings related to the fiscal '25 budget. This evening will stem primarily discussions related to the school department's budget. However, I would like to start off every one of these meetings as we did last time with a level set, so if there are new members of the public watching to understand where we are related to our fiscal '25 budget scenarios and status, we'll all be able to do this together at the last meeting, because I'm sure you'll all memorize it. So, Dan, next slide, please. Want to give an overview of the path that we've taken thus far to understand our budget challenges for fiscal '25. Back in December of 2022, there were some major contracts that we knew had to be renewed in fiscal '25, which starts on July 30th, excuse me, July 1st of 2024, that were indicating cost jumps of 10 to 40% based upon inflation. In January of 2023, the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee came together to highlight these potential challenges and to begin those discussions moving forward. In May of 2023, as we were looking further at these contracts, the challenges became clear into focus, and the Select Board had the forethought to create the Budget Task Force. The Budget Task Force worked feverishly throughout the summer months with department heads and other stakeholders, and presented a report to the Select Board and School Committee and Finance Committee in October of 2023. All of these documents with blue are linked to specific items on the webpage, so once this is up, you'll be able to link to those as well. After that Budget Task Force report was presented, the Select Board and the School Committee separately requested the preparation of two budgets. One that would meet a needs budget, which would require a Proposition Two and a Half override, and one with significant cuts to both town and school that would meet our Proposition Two and a Half limit. In December of 2023, those initial budgets were presented separately to the Select Board and the School Committee. We're currently in the process now of going through the budgets in great detail with the Finance Committee, and ensuring that these budgets are vetted and questions are asked. In March of 2024, the voters will have a chance to come to town meeting to vote on that budget or budgets, and then if there is an override presented, that question will be on the May 2024 ballot. I want to be clear with some of the challenges that we are seeing facing for fiscal '25 to fiscal '27, and this may actually extend beyond. Inflation is at a generational high right now, following a period of very low inflation. We have large energy, service, and labor contracts that are increasing. We have a commitment to competitive pay for both town and school that includes rigorous benchmarking of comparable communities, and targeting the average level of pay within those benchmark communities. We're seeing rapidly growing health insurance expenses, both because of our experience with our employees, as well as those expenses that are growing within the market. We see that there will be some opportunities for new revenue, but that will take some time. This is dependent on the MBTA multifamily zoning that will be coming before town meeting in March of 2024, and we would be looking to contract with an economic development consultant to understand how we can grow our commercial industrial tax base. In summary, Proposition Two and a Half really presents the constraints that are going to be driving these deep service cuts if we stay within the cut budget. So we, again, link to the task force there. This is a chart that shows where we are currently in our fiscal '24 budget to the far left. We have a budget of $128 million, 100, and change. We're seeing about 902,000, excuse me, we're seeing an increase of 902,000 for solid waste, recycling, electricity, gas, and the like. And then the other contracts include town labor contracts, school labor contracts, health insurance trust, the school bus contract, special education tuition, and other increases. So there is ultimately a $10 million increase in budgets from fiscal '24 to '25. We're very mindful that there are potential efficiencies and potential revenue that the town can realize. They may not all come to fruition at once. It's going to take some careful planning and analysis, but the town staff and the boards that I've seen are very committed to this. We're looking at centralized fleet fueling at the DPW garage, centralized fleet maintenance opportunities on the town side, comparing our fee structures to others. The Health Department just adjusted their fees for market, and Ambulance Enterprise did so as well. We're looking at composting to reduce our solid waste tonnage, as we do pay by the ton when we're tipping, and that residential service became available on December 1st. We're looking at the MBTA zoning and economic development potentials, technology integration, what are we using now for technology, how could we use it in the future, what are we not using that we are currently paying for, looking at shared service agreements, both internal, so between town and school, and external between town to town. And we want to continue to monitor and examine our health insurance opportunities if there's a realization for efficiencies and cost savings. Want to be clear with residents that we do have many real estate tax exemptions and tax deferral options. If you don't currently know if you qualify, or want some more information on the property, excuse me, the projects, there's senior mean test, tested exemptions, Community Preservation Act exemptions, veterans, elderly, surviving, surviving spouse, and disabled. And we want people to know that they are very free to call the assessor's office. There is no judgment. We want to make sure that people are getting the help that they need if they qualify for The things that we're still monitoring for both fiscal '25 and beyond are state and federal aid. We expect to get the state budget next week. What new growth will be, that's dependent on what we see in terms of new development within Westford, our solid waste and recycling, so the tonnage going up or going down, and the recycling market and how that is handled, our aging infrastructure and facilities and how we manage those and care for those over time, what our public safety needs are, our energy costs, which we're currently reviewing with an Ameresco energy contract for several buildings in town. We want to look at our clean energy and sustainability recommendations and how we want to meet those. We have a huge redevelopment potential at 12 North Main Street, which we receive federal and state funding and want to get that moving. The hotel and meals excise tax luckily has come back to pre-COVID rates. We would, we would want to see that continue to increase. Snow and ice deficit, that's always dependent on weather. We've seen some significant storms already this fiscal year. The town finally is realizing a fair share apportionment from the millionaire's tax, but that will be variable year to year based upon income, and then ultimately an override versus non-override budget, which is still being considered. We want to make sure that the public is aware of the next steps and how they can get involved in the process and educate themselves and their family. We're currently in the budget hearings with the Finance Committee. On January 23rd, next Tuesday, the Select Board will vote to close the warrant and place budget articles on the town meeting warrant. We'll be doing a traveling roadshow with myself and Dr. Chu and others to educate the public where they are, including going to the League of Women Voters event, Cameron Senior Center, PTO meetings, Friends of the Library, CPAC Rotary, and others. The Select Board on February 13th will set the order of the warrant articles. We are going to be holding at least one open forum in March, perhaps one in advance, and also looking to meet with the students of Westford Academy, as several of them may actually be able to vote at town meeting and at the ballot. Your voice really can be heard at annual town meeting on March 23rd, and then if the override moves forward and passes at town meeting, we would be going to a ballot on May 7th. And I won't go through all of these in detail, but there's many ways on our website and other fashions for people to get involved and get new information. We created a brand-new budget page that is linked right off the town webpage, so it is very easy to navigate and get to, and we continuing to add documents there. And also, the Budget Task Force and other key staff created educational videos on these issues, as we know that many people do like to watch those rather than reading text. So with that, I just want to be clear that I know in previous budget rounds, the Finance Committee meetings were an open process. You did collect data, but the budget didn't change much. This year, we're definitely in financial crisis. We are looking at several models. So myself and the Select Board are taking the comments that are received this evening and for future meetings and your last meeting extremely seriously, and will likely be coming back with a revised budget or budgets in, in early February. So we really appreciate all the comments that are going to be coming from your committee, as well as members of the public, because this is very important to flesh out and determine what is best for Westford moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. So, before we get into the review of the Education Department before us tonight, I just wanted to let any members of the public who are here or who are on Zoom, the board members will go through their questions after Dr. Chu gives kind of a little opening preview. And then after that, if, if members of the public have questions, if you're in the room, you can come to the microphone, introduce yourself, you see that microphone is active, okay. You can come to the microphone, introduce yourself, your name and your address, and ask your question. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, and we'll get to you. So with that, Dr. Chu?
Sure, thank you very much. So, I thought it might be helpful if we use just a couple of the slides from the presentation that I had shared with the School Committee a number of weeks ago. So, Dan, if we could bring up that slide presentation, maybe to slide nine? So, what, as, as Kristin was just talking about, with the process of the, the Budget Task Force, which we've all talked a great deal about, and people have heard a lot about, one of the things that we did right from the very beginning is we looked at what our FY '24 budget was, we looked at what the projection was that was articulated in the Budget Task Force report, which is that middle column there, or that middle row. And then what we did is we, we looked to see how could we reduce that, which was initially looking at an 8.18% increase to our budget. And so, the first thing I'm going to talk about is the, the adjustments that we made to come up with a 7% increase. So we'll talk about the two budgets that Kristin also alluded to. We have the, our recommended needs request, and then we have the budget that would be meeting the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half. So, from there, so we, we had made some reductions. If you'd go to slide 14, we'll kind of start talking about the initial reductions, that we'd, we'd use a similar methodology that we've used for the last couple of years with the last budgets that we've, that we've created. First, looking at our enrollment and looking to see where, where should we be making reductions based on the students that we have in our district? And so the first couple of things are that. So, we know that based on the numbers moving through the district, that we were already planning to decrease two full-time positions at the middle school level. Based on the enrollment at the academy, we're recommending that we would reduce 2.2 FTEs or full-time equivalents at Westford Academy. That becomes a little bit more difficult, and you can see over in the, in the right-hand side that that would be broken amongst or across various departments, and in some cases, impacting a full-time position and making it less than full-time. For the general public, each point two of a full-time position is one course. So there, if you look at the, the, the right-hand column, to say point eight in world languages, that would be four sections of world languages. So that'd be four classes, four courses of world languages. The HSS is social studies, point two, of social studies, point six in VPA, that's visual performing arts, that would be three courses in visual performing arts, and point six ELA would be three courses in, in ELA. And then, then in decreasing four sections at the elementary level. It's usually an easier thing for us to sort of communicate at the elementary level, because you think a section is one class. So the numbers have changed, so you no longer need five classes of fifth graders at this one school. You can go down to four classes in the next year. And it just gets a little more complicated at the academy level, so I just kind of wanted to explain that in terms of the, how the points equal to the different, different courses. And go ahead into the next, or the 15, yes, slide down, thank you. So in addition to those initial enrollment adjustments, one of the things that we had looked at, we, we had been looking at needing to update our leases for our special education transportation. We have in-house transportation. We currently have 18 people in that department. And as we were looking at that, looking at the budget, and looking at the cost of the increases to lease the vans, and the increases just to carrying the staff and, and costs to employment, what was originally established a long time ago as a cost savings measure, which was to have our own in-house transportation, we've realized that it was no longer a cost savings measure. So, we are projecting that we could save $227,170 if we were to eliminate our in-district transportation and outsource the rest of our transportation needs. For context, some of our out-of-district transportation routes have already been outsourced. And so, that's the way we had looked at this information. We had looked at the cost of those routes, compared it to the costs of, of what we're carrying for the employees and the benefits, and the cost of, the increasing costs to lease the, the vans, and we realized that that would be something that we could make as an adjustment moving forward. And then another thing that we looked at is that in, in central office, we currently have a data specialist, and that's something that we could reduce and, and spread those responsibilities amongst some other members of central office. So all of those initial reductions totaled $838,725. Now, in doing that, there are some other things that we are considering. So there are some additions that, that we are considering that we think, one of which will be a, a cost savings measure in the future. So if you could go to the next slide, Dan, thank you. So the additional adjustments here, we, and we did a presentation about this 18- to 22-year-old program for the School Committee, and, and all of that is publicly available. We could share that, that presentation with you as well, too, if you wanted to. But currently, we, we, for our 18- to 22-year-old population, so public schools in Massachusetts are required to provide services for students who are receiving special education services through the age of 22. So what happens sometimes is that you will have students who will, they'll be finished with their four years at Westford Academy, but they might still require specific supports that the local community would continue to provide until they reach the age of 22, in which case they would then transition to a different adult services in a, that different departments would be supporting in the state. And so, we currently send the majority of these students to different outplaced programs around the state, or in our locality, but in, in different, in different locations. And so one of the things that we looked at is if, if we were to create our own 18- to 22-year-old program here within the district, it would cost us, we're projecting $227,000. The potential savings that we would see potentially even next year in FY '25, but over time would be significant, based on the number of students that we are sending to different programs. So that's something that we presented to the School Committee. There was a separate presentation that talked about it, and, and we can talk more about that specifics as well, too. And then another thing that we needed to add is that this year in December, based on our increasing number of students who are receiving English language learning supports within our district, we needed to add an additional teacher. So in December, we needed to hire somebody, and so that's the additional cost there. So that person is on our books right now, which we will need to absorb in FY '25 in the budget. So it wasn't budgeted for FY '24, and we will need to make sure that that exists in FY '25. So those additions, the $294,346, if you go to the, if we slide through, well, I'll talk about this too quickly. We, another thing in trying to bring that down, we increased a number of the other offsets that I know all of you are familiar with, the fact that we offset some of our budget from some of our revolving accounts. So that's what's outlined here as well, too, and we can speak more specifically about it if you have questions about it, but I won't, I won't talk too much about that. So in the next slide, when we add those together, the difference ended up being $774,207, and that's what we were, we reduced that initial projected FY '25 adjustments to, which is how we came up with what our recommended needs were. So that's how we came up with, which is a 7% increase over our FY '24 allocation. Now, those are the adjustments that would be made, that's the different FTEs that would be impacted, the different impacts with the offsets. So now what I like to talk about is the impacts for the budget that would remain within the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half. So if you slide to, I think it's slide 27? Okay. So these are in addition to those other reductions. It's just that everybody's clear about that. So those, the first, the first things that we just talked about, all of those would be happening, plus then we would be looking at this. So the difference between those two budgets is $3,297,768 that you can see on that slide there. So that was the task that then we looked at to see where, how could we reduce that amount to, to meet the, which is, the target that we looked at is actually a 2% increase of our allocation. So if we go to the next slide. So, in addition to the additional reductions, what we're, what we're proposing here would be, we would recommend currently, at our K-2 schools, we have six literacy specialists, so we were saying that we could reduce that number to three. So instead of two literacy specialists at each of our K-2 schools, there would just be one, and then there would still be one literacy specialist at the three-to-five schools that we have as well. We would reduce the district-wide administration by eliminating the Director of Equity Curriculum and Instruction position, as well as restructuring the K-5 curriculum coordinators into STEM and Humanities, and that would be a reduction of three positions across the board for that. Currently, we have a reading interventionist and math interventionists at all of our elementary schools, and at the middle schools as well, too. If we were to adjust that model and eliminate those positions, and put an academic coach at each one of the elementary schools, it would be a savings of $445,198. If we slide to the next, or go, move to the next slide, thank you, Dan. Then additionally, we currently have two, we have a reading class at each one of our middle schools that serves sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. It's a general education reading elective, that if we were to eliminate that, that would, again, be two additional positions, that would be an estimated savings of $133,794. I will mention at this moment in time, because I haven't said this yet for this group, we use a very specific number when we are estimating what the FTE costs, because it depends on, it's not necessarily going to be one salary to another. So what we use is, on our step salary, we use M, master's step four, which is our, that's, that's the middle of our group, and that's the middle of, of the average of our employees. And that salary is 66,000, oh, it's on the next slide, actually, because we have one there. It's 66,700 in, yeah, it's on the third slide, sorry. It's, it's 66,000, and, oh, we'll get to it, you'll see it. But that's where those numbers come from, so that that's what we use as an estimate, because one of the things that I had shared in some of the questions that, that you had asked is that, you know, we might hire somebody at a, at, or we might, we might have a, a person at a higher step retire, and then someone might come in at a lower step, and that might be a different savings. But then sometimes we have a, a very, a very difficult position to fill. I will say, one of the best examples is always your physics or chemistry teachers at the, at the high school level. Those are very difficult positions to find, that sometimes we might have somebody leave us, and the person that we, that we hire comes in at a higher cost as well, too, which is why we use this, this very one specific number as our estimate. So then, I'll speak to the additional reductions at Westford Academy. In order to meet the demands of Proposition Two and a Half, we would need to reduce an additional 11.4 FTEs at Westford Academy. So that would impact all of those departments that you see there, which would have an increase in class sizes. It would also mean eliminating a number of specialty electives that exist in some of the departments, and it might make it, it would be, it would make it challenging for students to double up in some ways that, that they've been able to so far. We can go on to the next slide. And so then we would also additionally reduce four more elementary positions. So the total reductions there would be $2,159,896. So if you go to the, the next slide there, the next piece in doing this was taking the staff reductions. Then, one of the things that, that we can talk about, it's, I, I think we've answered in some questions, but it certainly, I think people, things that people have questions about is that currently in our comp reserve for the, for our, our recommended needs request is to make sure that we're bringing all of our contracts and all of our employees to that competitive rate. If we are not able to, if we're not able to meet that, then we would reduce our comp reserve by an additional $1 million, which is how we end up coming to that 3.29. We also increased the offset in the preschool revolving account, which draws that further below where we would want it to be. And then we, because the ESPs is our, is, they were formerly known as our teaching assistants, but educational support professionals, I, I know you're, I believe you're all very familiar with the fact that special education is so fluid, and, and there's a, there's a variability that exists throughout the year, both with students moving into the district, and/or students being identified throughout the year that might require additional support or additional services. So we, we tend to keep a contingency, a contingency of two ESPs in the budget, because at any time we would need to hire them. So we would eliminate that contingency as well, and that's how we came up with the, with the 3.297. So that's the outline of our budget in the way in which the two would be impacted. I'm, I'm hoping that that's a helpful context in which to start our conversation. If there's anything else that I could share with you, I'm happy to do that.
I think so. So we'll open up to questions from Finance Committee. You want to go first?
Hi.
Go ahead, Tom.
I have several, so I'll start with one. I'm going to look at the 18- to 22 program first, okay? First of all, I have to say I appreciate the efforts to bring that reduced cost by bringing it in-house. I do believe that you will be able to achieve that, and we will see that for years to come at a very large number. But, my questions are a couple-fold. Given that the program is proposed in both budgets right now, that kind of says to me that it's going to move going to move forward. And I believe that you've said in some school committee meetings that the build-out of the space would be covered under with using internal staff and and within budget. I'm wondering if we could start that work now, to be able to have the foundation actually built, and would that help to get the program to a point that some of the families can start to commit, that we can get the recommendations from the teams so that you can have a better sense of what the cost savings or the enrollment in that program would be? And if we can do that, I would really like to see that offset cost, the savings, the the proposed salary, really, just removed from that out-of-district line. I understand the the legal requirement to to provide for this. I just I still conceptually have a really hard time having that money in the out-of-district and in in the in the salaries. So I just I wonder if you can speak to any of that.
Yes. So thank you, and I appreciate the fact that you've been you've been with us this whole time, right? So you've you have participated in a number of those conversations. The the physical the physical needs that that we would have would be really establishing a space that could act as the the classroom for different living skills. So what for the context for everybody, we would be creating basically what would might look like an apartment with with a with a bedroom and with dressers and different things like that so that it could help students learn different independent living skills. We have a fully functional kitchen here. Establishing laundry here would not be a significant cost. So to build that actually wouldn't be very difficult and we could start that. And you are right, it is proposed in both of our budgets and now that the school committee did vote on the initial recommendation on Tuesday and we are kind of moving forward this, that we should be able to move forward, talking with people about this will exist to understand as we set up the different team meetings whether families whether they think that this is the the placement for students. The challenge with that is that it does take a while to for all of those meetings, right? To then if if we did know that for every time we would know the placement of an individual student, we would be able to reduce that from the out-of-district the out-of-district line item projection. But it would have to happen with each placement as we were going through that process. So I do think that we can we can start that. I think people are eager to learn about it, but we can't just remove the two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars because we we won't know for sure exactly how many of the students that are that would be would be in that would be eligible for this program. So we're we're projecting that it could be eight students for everybody to understand, but we don't know if if all of them if if that would end up coming to fruition yet. So I hear you in terms of the as soon as we can start doing that, but but that in itself takes a little bit of time. So we will, but we just can't start moving that right of way. It would be interesting as to any changes that might happen even before March twenty-third. I don't know if that's a realistic ask. Courtney can help with that.
There's only one tuition that's currently scheduled for out-of-district.
Courtney, you need to come to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Or you can you can join either one.
There's only one potential out-of-district tuition that would be potentially coming back. The others that we're looking at is a cost savings, that it's not going to cost us that projected. And I think it's outlined in one of the answers that we had provided to you. We had given you a a range of what that might look like, anywhere from an individual tuition of thirty-nine thousand dollars per year to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per year.
Right. And and I again, I conceptually understand that. It's just, you know, I I struggle with the idea of budgeting for staff and for the out-of-district because I'm assuming that the the
We're not.
Potential.
We're not. Those students are not budgeted right now in and out-of-district placement because commitments have not been made. Team meetings have not happened. We know that we have students that we need to program for. And so what the current teams are looking at would be to stay within their home district and to have something here that they feel as though would be robust and be able to meet their needs.
Okay.
But we have to make that is a decision that needs to be made in a timely fashion for the sake of our families and students.
Okay. Thank you.
I actually have some follow-up on that.
So you have follow-up on that, go ahead.
Okay. So the the cost, the two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand or whatever it was, does that include benefits? I assume those FTEs would be benefited positions?
It would be.
But
That's that's actually an excellent question that I would throw to Dan.
Yeah.
That is that's our salary.
Right.
So the cost of benefits is something that we would work with with the town on.
Right. I mean, I
Whether they take the benefits or whether they don't, right.
Yeah. So I mean, I I know it shows up on the town side, so that was just that was sort of my way of asking of
Right.
Is that accounted for anywhere on the town side?
Yeah, there's always some flexibility there and especially now where we have the health insurance trust. It's really the the claims that are that count. But on average, I'd say about half of the eligible employees for the schools actually sign up for the health insurance. So we're talking if their, you know, average plan is fifteen thousand, so maybe eight thousand per person.
Is the town's portion?
Fifty percent, yeah. So probably about, you know, twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars might be the impact.
Okay. Okay. So that's that's one question. And then the the EV van that is was requested in capital, can you just explain how that would how that would be used and would that take care of? Because you had mentioned that
Yeah.
Transportation, you know, you may have to provide transportation. Would that one van provide that or do we need to add transportation on top of the costs?
So for the for the in-district program, for the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old, a major component of that is connecting the students with different job sites. And so that would be the the purpose of having the primary purpose for having the 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 EV van. And we do believe that that one van would be able to meet those needs. It wouldn't be for it wouldn't necessarily be for for bringing students to the program because that might still be a part of the the different special education transportation that we might have. But the need of of being able to bring students to have the flexibility within the day for the people running the program to be able to get students where they need to be and to be able to and and we actually have a number of different in-district field trips that take place with different programs that we have where we have students that are going to the grocery store to buy groceries to and different things like that. And so that's the that's why we've kept that need of the one the one EV van that we have in the capital.
But but it would not be transporting students to and from school if they need to have service?
I mean, it we that that wouldn't be part of that service, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there could be, I guess my point is, there could be extra transportation costs that have that are not built into this two-twenty-seven?
There could be. It would be it would be in-district, which would be very different than out-of-district out-of-district
Yeah.
Costs. And so I feel like it'd be something that would be it would probably be a part of think actually routes that are already in our budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. One last question. Are any of these tuitions eligible for circuit breaker if they're out-of-district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So all of our, go ahead, Dan.
Anything that's going to exceed, the new threshold is fifty-one thousand, seven-hundred dollars. So anything that would exceed that, we would be able to apply for circuit breaker. It's not a full return on it.
Yep.
It changes
Yep.
From here to here. Hopefully, it would be seventy-five percent of once we reach that fifty-one thousand-dollar threshold.
So actually, while you're there, Courtney.
And the same is true for in-district. If we were to spend that much money on a on on the student in-district as well, we could apply for circuit breaker.
On an in-district program?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how that would what that does to any net cost or savings like estimation. So the the numbers that you gave us, the city you said the savings could be anywhere from three-hundred-and-twelve thousand to like one-point-two-million. Does that include circuit breaker or not?
Well, the circuit breaker we use in the following year
Right.
To pay for the tuition. And so because it's based on the previous year, it's challenging
Right.
To do that. But we take it off our bottom line in the budget. So it it becomes, you know, it does what it's what you're implying that it would do just the following year as far as reducing how much the general budget would need to come up for tuition money.
Okay. I I'm I'm still trying to piece it in my head to to try to figure out how much of a risk this is. Are we, you know, are we going to be breaking even? Are we actually going to be saving a lot of money? It's just it's
Yeah. I would say if we were if we broke even, we'd still be doing what's in the best interest of our students for in Westford. And we do have the potential of bringing other students back. It's just not something that we would want to, you know, hang our hat on.
Sure. Do you have one more and then I'll I'll pass it on. Do you have the option to bring if there was, let's say, a child in Littleton, could you bring in an outside student?
Yes, and we have in before in some of our other specialty programs. So a lot of the directors in the area will work together and say, you know, my preschool's at capacity. Does anybody else have a a preschool opening? There are a couple other, you know, we have sent students in the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old range to North Middlesex Regional District and tuitioned them in. So there is that flexibility.
And we could we would calculate some sort of tuition that the sending district would give.
Right. It's not just a throwing of the dart. We have to look at our circuit breaker and run each of the students' service delivery grid through the circuit breaker. It tallies a number and that's what we would charge.
All right. Thank you very much.
Christina, you also have Heather has a question, too, but I know Hari had first.
I think, Hari, do you solve a question?
I might have simple questions. The first one is, the number you're looking for is on slide sixteen.
Thank you.
And we've been looking at the slide all day today. So for me, it I can't escape drawing the parallel between renting versus owning when you're bringing this eighteen to twenty-year-old post-school education back in. So if you're sending them out, it's kind of we're paying variable costs, but it's proportionate and we're bringing in. There could be certain amount of fixed costs. There's step fixed costs, right? Like if you have three kids, you need one teacher, and if you have five kids, you'd need two teachers, right? So at some point, have you guys given have you all given enough consideration to how it would look like like from a owning the whole program instead of expanding the program?
Yes. So so yes, thank you for the first thing is so I had actually I had ran by that slide because it was when I was talking about the ELL teacher. It was sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. So that's where that was located. If, let me see, because I'm going to share with you what our what our projected numbers are, okay, in terms of the program. So in not considering what Christina just asked in terms of bringing additional students into the program from other towns, based on our students who are currently enrolled in the district, who if we follow their ages would be a we believe would be appropriately placed in this eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program, we know that in FY twenty-five, we would have seven students and one who we believe would come back from another placement. So we would have eight students in FY twenty-five. In FY twenty-six, it would still be those eight students based on their ages. Then in FY twenty-seven, it could increase by one student to nine. And then in FY twenty-five, it could increase by three, based on just the numbers of the students who are currently enrolled. Now, at that point, then students would also then start aging out, so we'd just look at the other numbers in the middle school and younger. So we think that that would be the 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 typical size of the program. So that's why we believe that the that the staffing that we're recommending would be appropriate.
Okay. What how much did we spend on this program for the last five years on it? Did we did anybody collect like, okay, in twenty-twenty, we spent two-hundred K, twenty-twenty-one, we spent five-hundred K. So did we do any
We did.
Historical analysis?
We did. So on on slide, well, on the historical analysis is relatively consistent, but I will just share share the current numbers. So in FY twenty-four, on slide fifty-one in that in that presentation, we are spending nine-hundred-and-nine nine-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars on tuitions and we're spending a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand on transportation costs. So the total costs for us to currently support the We have twelve students who are in the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program right now. So our total costs are just over a million dollars a year. And so so that and that that's been relatively consistent, wouldn't you say, Courtney?
I I would say, and then I would just have a little bit of caution because of that number, there are still students that still require a much higher level of care than what
Right.
We will be doing within this program. So there are students that are still part of that total tuition cost of nine-nineteen that would continue to have the appropriate programming.
And then what what how much does circuit breaker reimburse us the following year for any of this?
It's still the same thing. Anything over the they just changed the threshold, which Courtney mentioned, right? Which and they raised it, so that doesn't help us.
Always.
So anything over that fifty-one thousand dollars, so for all we are receiving circuit breaker for all of
Hundred thousand, basically. But does it include transportation costs?
Yes, it does.
All right. So yeah, so approximately four to six-hundred thousand dollars.
One final small question.
I'm trying to figure out the net, even if it even though it takes two years, what's what's the net cost?
We could get that number to you probably for the full circuit breaker report.
Because I don't think we can look at this one million number and say that we're actually going to save all of that if we're getting circuit breaker money in, right? We're not going to
Correct.
You've got to you've got to adjust for that.
But that's
And we do every year with the budget.
Right. No, I know you do. I'm seeing for this particular program, I that's what I want to see.
Which which takes us back to where why we have that range, right? Because again, we don't necessarily know, we are not anticipating that any of the twelve students, well, I guess we're anticipating one. So we're anticipating that one of those twelve students that is in that one million dollars right now would that might be a cost savings for us. That's kind of what Courtney had alluded to, right? Because one of the reasons why there it's it might not be the appropriate placement for the students and or they're actually already a part of another program.
Yep.
So the idea of coming is just a different change, right?
Sure.
So that's why our focus is on knowing that in the future, those costs would go down because as the students are getting older, we do know that the students that are currently being supported at Westford Academy, they would be appropriate for this, based on Tom's understanding, too, as long as we can kind of get the team ready to say and get people excited about it.
Yep. No, I understand. I'm just I'm just trying to look at
Right.
If those seven or eight students coming in, if you were able to educate them here, it would cost X. If you sent them out and adjusted for circuit breaker, what would that cost be?
Right.
That's that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Okay.
One last tiny question. When the program is fully populated to nine or ten kids, what would be the estimated cost per year for this programming?
The estimated cost would would be the the staff.
Same?
It'd be the same.
Even the
Plus the steps and
The steps. It would increase. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it would increase by by whatever the the step and and cola increase would be, but it would be the the primary function would be the staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think Heather has a
Yeah, I'm going to go to Heather.
I'm sorry. I think you said Heather.
Yes.
Yes, I did. Heather, go ahead.
I have a little bit of hard time understanding, are these students, they're not guaranteed. Are they likely or have we talked to the families that they're interested in your program? And also, you've spoken about bringing in other kids. I mean, have we started talking to any districts yet about combining and regionalizing that service?
So so first of all, we haven't started talking to other districts. We're we're not Christina asked the question whether it would be possible. We're not that that's not a part of our projection specifically, bringing in new students from other districts. This is a conversation that has been happening for maybe just over a year in in talking about the potential possibility of doing this with families. The transition process starts early in, well, it it actually starts once students reach fourteen. So the idea that some of these conversations and parents have already been looking with their teams as to what that possibility would be. So people have already been looking at other opportunities because this wasn't on the radar. But now that we've been talking about it, people are aware of it and and the feedback that we are receiving from many of our families is they would rather the students stay in Westford and be connecting with job sites and with different organizations here in Westford rather than going to and with different organizations here in Westford rather than going to other communities that they've needed to do. But that was sort of Tom's question about, you know, when can we start to move forward with this? That's why, that's one of the reasons why we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not putting a specific dollar amount as to the projection of the cost savings because we know that it's an investment upfront. But that was Courtney's point as well, too. It, we also know that this is in the best interest of all these students. It's better for them to be here, for us to have a, a, a positive, robust program here in Westford where they're able to connect to potentially have longer-term relationships with job sites after they're, after they age out of the school support.
Okay. And then just one follow-up question on that whole van discussion. I know in the budget that we're working to outsource the transportation. Is there someone left on staff who's, I don't know if there's special qualifications or licensing that, in order to drive that van?
Yes. So, um, yes, we do. And that was, that's another aspect. When we talk about, when we've, when we are planning to eliminate our, our in-house fleet, we're not looking to remove our transportation coordinator because of the work that she does with helping to organize and communicate with our bus contractor for all of our general education routes, as well as still continuing to be the point person as we're establishing special education routes. So, we would still need that work. And in order to, in order to drive this vehicle for, for specific trips, the, we would make sure that the people who are working in the program had the qualifications to do that.
You good, Heather? I'm assuming she is. Okay. I, I think we're good on the postgraduate program. I think we can, why don't we move along?
Christina, John has a question.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Couple of questions. When you talked about the eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old, is that eighteen, does that include twenty-two-year-olds or is it eighteen through twenty-one?
It's eighteen through twenty-two.
Up to their.
Up to.
The day before their twenty-second birthday.
Thank you.
Up to their twenty-second.
The day before their twenty-second birthday.
Because I'd read that somewhere. Okay. On the transportation, do you have a, a concept of how you're going to operate with this single van? Any backup in case it has any problems? Any storage? Because electrical vehicles are pretty sensitive to cold weather, that sort of thing. Where's it going to be housed, charged, maintained?
Well, it would be housed and, and stored here. In terms of backup vehicle for it, I would say no. That isn't something that we were, that, that we have been talking about.
I'm just concerned about flexibility. If you leased it all, at least you might have a bigger pool of vehicles to choose from if this one has a problem.
Yeah.
So, I'm just concerned about that. Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Good. Thank you. Can you just pass these over to folks over here and pass one down? Dr. Chu, thank you very much. And I want to thank Jenny for the conscientious and deep, deep responses that she gave to everybody's questions. They were very, very well done. I have a couple of questions. I want to talk a little bit about the contract process. And I, I want to preface my remarks by saying I realize that these contracts are settled. I'm not suggesting or even hinting that they'd be reopened or anything. I want to make that clear. But I do want to get a better understanding of these because I'm sure that there's going to be some criticism coming from the voters with regards to whether these were, they're backfilling largess or they're meeting contingencies. That's what the question's going to be. So, the first question I have is, there's a lot of contracts here, quite a few. And it's, looks as though they all settle and are all come due about the same time. And I realize that there's some history here, but can you explain why they can't be staggered at all?
Yeah. So, some of them were staggered. And what ended up happening was that through COVID, a couple of the unions, we ended up settling one-year contracts in order to get through different scenarios, in which case that staggering started all falling together. So, in my first year as superintendent, I believe we had eleven contracts that we were, that we were looking at. The only contract that was already settled before I started was the food service contract. All of the others were either about to, we were either going to be negotiating them that year or in the next year. So, um, so that, so that's how they, that's how they ended up lining up in that way. It's not the ideal. It's not what we would like to see. I, we, we're, in some cases, because of the time that it has taken to settle some of them, some of them have started to stagger again because we actually went through, I'll just say the example of Unit E and Unit A, which is probably our two biggest contracts. Unit E is our educational support professionals, and then Unit A is our teachers. Unit E, we actually went an entire year with an unsettled contract. So, once we settled their contract, we were already in year two of their contract. So, that one's going to come up again sooner. So, we were negotiating them at the same time, whereas the Unit A contract, it, it did settle in time for their three years. So, so we've started to, to, to see them stagger again. But the, the way in which we ended up in that scenario was that a few of them ended up accepting and, and settling one-year agreements that then put them all in the same cycle.
Okay. So, the object would be to get them staggered if we can, right? The other question I have is on alignment, with salary alignment. I noticed that during we were looking at the reviews, and in some cases, some salaries had bumps of seven percent and things like that, you know, where three, two, three is generally. And I think, I think Jenny did that. I think she's mentioned that there were, there were certain types of positions that had been working at minimum wage and that you needed to make the adjustments. And I recall that in two thousand seventeen, there was a similar issue with regards to this. So, I think the question I have for you here is, are these, are these salary discrepancies starting to iron out so that they're, they're, they're in sync? Or are we still chasing the, chasing the, trying to chase the, the horse after the barn door is open?
Right. So, so in, in, I will say, in, in the biggest picture with these contracts, we are getting very close to settling those gaps, right? That is the difference between our two budgets. In terms of with our, with our seven percent increase and with the, with the reserve that we have, what we have in comp reserve, we would be able to close the gap appropriately and get our, our units to the middle of the comp, the comparable districts. If we don't, if we don't have access to that and we end up with living within the constraints of the two and a half percent, then our Unit A will not, we won't, we'll be moving towards closing the gap, but we won't have closed the gap. So, we will still be chasing it a little bit. The Unit E, which is the one that we talked about, that would, our, our first step for Unit E, the entry-level position was below minimum wage once the minimum wage had changed. So, minimum wage over time surpassed what the contract had for the, for the salary. So, we couldn't even bring people in at step one because it was below minimum wage, which, so the impact is that then it impacts in some regard, all of the different steps as you make those adjustments. So, that was why we were saying that, that there are larger increases in Unit E that you would see. It does meet the comp, the, the, the competitive pay. And so, we feel like that is, that, that has been established. And so, that, as long as we can continue to keep up with what we think is the projected cola amounts, you know, the cost of living increases, we think that should be, that should be all set.
When you say mandatory, minimum wage, you're talking about state min, like fifteen dollars an hour?
Yes.
Really? Wow. All right. The last question I have is this, and I think it's, I think it's, it has to do with the market baskets. I think you're going to get some questions about this. I gave, I passed this out. If you want to get this over to them. And I've, I've, I've tooted this horn before on this, but I took the, I took the market baskets that were, that were offered in the budget. And I looked and I figured, figured out the, the, basically the per capita income for each community. And I wanted to just ask you a question about this because it, it puzzles me and hopefully you can, you can, you can explain it. When you use, when you use median income, you get a kind of a distorted picture of what the, what the actual fiscal base is. When you use per capita income, you kind of understand the spikes better. You can understand, for example, a high, a high per capita income means that there's a broad base of wealth in the community. When you look at these, these community towns we're talking about here, Hingham, Needham, and this mix, the average per capita income for the market basket communities is ninety-six thousand dollars a year. Now, that's a pretty wide range of wealth. Our per capita income is seventy-two thousand dollars. So, we're kind of on the bottom end of that. And I just wanted to see, when, so that means a certain amount of our people in this town are going to get hurt by this tax increase. And I just wanted to know if anybody really thought about that before they did this and what, what your response is to that. How do you address that?
Sure. I, I will say, our market basket is based on what DESI establishes as our DART districts. And what we used is what is the best practice in the school industry. So, what we did is we looked at the DART districts, which are established by the Department of Education based on a number of different metrics. There's ten communities that they use. They do change, which is one of the challenges that we have seen with this gap in pay, is that the, the, the market basket that existed in two thousand seventeen, half of it has changed in, in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Additionally, in working and looking at what is the best practice within, again, our industry, within the school industry, communities use the DART districts and then they use the adjacent communities as well, too. That's the feedback that we were receiving when we talked to other school districts to figure out what are they using as their, to, to determine their, their comps again, right? And so, we then used our local adjacent communities because that also helps give us some sense of stability, whereas we know that the DART districts are moving. We didn't look at the per capita income to make any adjustments because we wanted to have a very clear methodology for why we were using these, these comps in the first place. And that was, again, like I said, based on the industry standard and based on the way in which the Department of Education establishes the DART districts plus our adjacent communities as well.
So, is it, is you ought to say that it's the Department of Education that, that drove these, these districts?
The Department, the Department of Education establishes the DART district for every district in the state every single year.
I'll just add that they look at grade span, total enrollment, and special populations. So, that's students with disability, low income, and English-language learners. So, the idea is that our DART districts are educating the same profile of students, whether it's Sharon or Westford.
Right. Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Heather? Go ahead, Heather.
So, FinCom has long followed the enrollment declines with the schools. And, you know, we've seen the various cuts, and you have some at the beginning. And I'm not even going to call them cuts because they're kind of just adjusting to the reality of the situation. We've seen them in the elementaries. We've seen them in the middles. I have two comments here, kind of. One is I don't really understand why there isn't some more creative thought going into the building usage. A couple of years ago, there was talk of redistricting, and it just kind of was a big presentation that went by the sidelines. So, there's that component. And then after you kind of update us on that, I'll go to my WA issues.
Okay. So, I will say, yes, Heather, I was on the redistricting committee as a, as a building principal a number of years ago. And I will tell you, I, I don't necessarily know why that didn't end up going anywhere at that time. What I can tell you right now is that when we, when we engaged with SMMA in order to do the feasibility study for our master plan for the district, we were looking to see the space utilization, to look to see how our buildings were currently being utilized and whether or not there was space within those buildings for us to house central office, because that was one of the concerns about this building in the first place. And it was very clear from their study as they looked at every single building and the way in which we're using it, that our schools are being used in terms of the classroom spaces to a point that we wouldn't be able to close a building, or we certainly wouldn't be able to add our central office needs into any one of the buildings. Now, the idea of, is there, I, I know there are, there are two empty classrooms at the day school right now, based on just the adjustments that we made this year. And I do agree with you when you say you would call them adjustments and not cuts. That's why I also always call them adjustments as well. But in looking at what we could do with just those two classrooms for the purposes of, of saving money or for, for budgetary reasons, we're not seeing that is, that would be something that would help us. If it was to help us make an adjustment so that the spaces that are being used at Abbott had more flexibility to it, that would be something that we could look at. However, we also know that we're trying to figure out what the needs are going to be for the Robinson and for the Abbott School. And we have been accepted into the eligibility period for the MSBA to explore a, a potential new building and/or construction on one of our existing buildings. To move students around until we know what the final outcome's going to be, doesn't seem to be a necessary disruption, if you will, to the students' experience at the school. And we didn't approach any of that as a, it wouldn't be a budgetary savings measure. I hope that answers that.
Yeah. It's, I started going through that big feasibility study and, you know.
It is a lot.
Immediately I noticed that we had a, a further reduction that was a decent size, even from the date of that study. So, from last year to this year. One of the comments you just said, though, is the way we are using the building. I'm wondering if there's some creative thought into better ways to use the buildings. I mean, you mentioned the two a day, but, you know, we only know what we know, and our experiences shape our thought. And my kids went through the Robinson and the Christopherly and the Blanchard school systems. And in that timeframe, we had, you know, counted in Christopherly, eight classrooms per floor, traditional classrooms, and four to five classrooms. I know there's six now in one of the grade levels. So, it appears that there's space. And in that same, you know, timeframe, we lost teams at Blanchard. We went from three to two. They were smaller teams, teams of two teachers and not teams of four teachers, but that we've got to have freed up two classrooms per grade or six classrooms. So, I'm just, you know, I, I feel like there needs to be some more thought as to, not necessarily how we're using it, but a better way to use it.
I hear you, Heather. And also, honestly, at any time, I'd be happy to give you tours of the buildings. I, I will push back and say that I do think creative thought as to how they're using the spaces is taking place. It, it's not necessarily going to save us money in the budget is, is the issue that we're looking at with the different populations. Redistricting would have alleviated some of the, some of the crowding that is taking place at some of our buildings. It wouldn't save us money. It would just impact, again, there is no flexibility for spaces at the Abbott School, whereas there is at the day school. And at Blanchard, where it might have been used as a traditional classroom, it's now being used as an, as a, as a, as a different space. It could be used as a collaborative space for students. One of the examples we gave you is classrooms that are close to the library that are now being able to use as small group instruction areas. When you talk about Christopherly, one of the main things that has changed at Christopherly has been the increase in the special education programming that we have at Christopherly. And so, we've had a growth in some of our programs that the space, while it might have been used as a traditional classroom, you know, a number of years ago, it's now being used as a, as a classroom for one of our REACH programs, which requires two rooms in order to provide the, honestly, the, the necessary space for the students that are being supported in that program.
Okay. So, on this whole enrollment thing, if I swing it over to WA for a little bit.
Yeah.
Again, I appreciate the adjustments, and I thought it was great that that, that work was done. And I think, is it what, two point two? Is that right?
Yes.
So, again, I'm going to go back to what I just said. We only know what we know and what our experiences are. I have two kids at WA, and I polled them, how many kids were in their classes. And if I take six classes from one of them and six classes from the other one, and I look at how many kids are in each of those classes, six of those classes have fifteen students or less. And it's a science class, a history class, some basic, some, some elective. So, you know, I know there's a lot of concern and, and pain on doing further adjustments, but I, I don't think it's sustainable to, to run the public school system. but I, I don't think it's sustainable to, to run the public school system with class levels like that. And again, like I said, it's, it's 50% of the kids, classes my kids are in.
Um, one, one of the things that we've shared, and I shared this, so it's in the packets, it's in the, it's in the, I, I'm not sure if we sent it to you or not, but I know the school committee, it was in their presentations, is I've actually given them the full enrollment of all the classes this year at Westward Academy. And what you will see is that there are, and the, the recommendations came from that specific, um, analysis of those enrollments. But one of the things that you'll see is that based on the levels of some of the classes, there are some classes where there is a much higher number of students. I'll, I'll use the math department as an example, okay? Um, in our geometry classes, you might have 30 students in an honors geometry class and there might be 16 in a, in a standard level class. And that was a decision that the, the, the math department had made in order to best support the students at that time. If they were to adjust that, they would end up with the, closer to the average of the 25 students per class. In the science classes, there is a cap at 24 for those science classes, based on the lab space and based on their ability to, uh, to, to actually conduct, basically it's the space, but it's also the, the number of students that they can have involved in a lab in the first place. But we are looking at it. Uh, I hear you. I, I think that the, I think that the reductions that we have included are, are appropriate, even though they met, they were met with great concern from, uh, from people throughout the, 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 the meetings that we have at the school committee. And if we were to, to reduce further, then the impact is going to just be higher class sizes. I've worked in a number of different school districts. And when I came to Westford, I was, I will, I will honestly say, I was surprised at, at the class sizes when, when I came here, only then to see, though, that it is something that has benefited all of our students. So yes, it's possible to operate with higher class sizes, but it does have an impact. And it, it will, it will make us more like everybody else as well, too, which is not necessarily something that we're looking for.
I, I just want to wonder if, you know, I, I agree with some of the comments out there that we've got to find some, some middle ground. There has to be a little bit more tightening, if you will. And so, you know, I, I think that the pencil needs to be a little sharper on some of that. And, and obviously FinCom is not qualified to even make a judgment on what that number would be or, you know. I, I just, I think that that needs to be pushed back to school committee and they need to come up with, or you all, and to present to school committee and come up with something that's just a little more tight.
I, I appreciate that, Heather. I, I do think that that's what we've been doing for the past three years. And I think we've been presenting very responsible budgets each year. And we've followed the same methodology that I followed in the last two years as well, too. I understand the difficulty that we're in. But I think that we've done the same thing when the last two years, we presented budgets that were 2.89% increases in the allocation, which is also very different than what I think the average is for school systems across the state. But I hear you and we will continue to look at it.
Okay, and I have one last one, if you'll humor me, Christina. You know, I look at all the fund balances and all the reserves. And I'm not sure, maybe it's worth me sitting with Jenny to kind of understand. But if I just do a quick add, those are some pretty substantial numbers. So I'm just curious, you know, and I know there's offsets here and we increase the offset when we need it there. Is there gonna be a policy on what to use? I mean, I see these, these, these bounces kind of growing over time. And I'm just gonna pick on the, the transportation one. I think it's like half a million dollars and we have a $400,000 impact this year that we have to absorb. You know, can't we kind of whittle that down over the next three years and, um, just kind of ease some of the pain? And that's just a small piece I want to add of, when, when I look at, at these fund reserve balances, maybe you all can give me the number, but I think we're talking millions.
For school bus transportation revolving account, actually, we already increased the offset uh, from the revolving account from $655,000 to $700,000 in fiscal year '25 for the total offset amount. Because if you look into the revolving accounts revenue for past three years, the, the last two fiscal year, that was post-COVID, post-pandemic, pandemic year. So our average revenue for the revolving account is 704,000 to 750,000 range. So we increased that offset from 655 to 700,000. It's already in our maximum capacity for our revolving account. Especially this year, we just renew our transportation, uh, we need to renew our transportation contract for another three years. The total regular bus cost increased about 12.1353%. Other than that, there's another huge portion that's athletic round transportation, which the cost increased from 300, 250, uh, minimum cost to $400 minimum cost. The total cost almost doubled. So we're gonna use the school bus transportation account to offset those sports transportation as well. So that's something we didn't expect for the regular transportation. That's a huge increase compared to other town. We thought we had a significant increase, but actually we are still paying very cheap costs compared to those surrounding district. So that's why, uh, we just cannot spend more from this account. We already at an maximum capacity. We have to prepare for regular transportation. We have to prepare for the sports transportation. So the both are adding together. So we're gonna spend on the transportation revolving account in fiscal year '25. We might have to use the general funds operating, uh, transportation function call to supplement the school bus transportation. That's very possible.
Can I add to, um, that it's been a goal of the finance subcommittee to sort of continue looking at this? Last year, we looked at each, a couple fees, one by one. Um, we got a late start this year and obviously we've been sidetracked by sort of the crisis. But instead of, but we do recognize the need for a more methodical review of, is our fee covering our expenses and what's the right, um, balance to sort of carry? One thing we did learn last year was that there was, was a sizable balance in the food service and that there's, um, MGL that says you have to have three months of expenses in there, which is about a million dollars. So sometimes on the surface, it looks like there's something there, but, um, but we, we, the plan would be to sort of get to a point where that's documented and easy to find for.
That, that would help because I kind of had a similar question, especially on transportation and, and a few of the other ones that, that just seem to be growing year after year, even if you increase the offset. So that's, that's good to, to hear.
We'll keep trying.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Ingrid first and then.
Can I just make one follow up? Sorry. The, the, the way we, revolving funds have balances to begin with is because the charges and the revenue was greater than the expenses that were taken up. And, and when balances are kind of growing over time like that, it means you're taking the revenue, but you're not necessarily using it on the people that are paying the revenue in. And I think that's where I kind of am like, you know, needing to push back a little bit. And, and there's also some other ones that I just, I don't even understand. I mean, there's a balance in living lab. We haven't had living lab for years. That was something that was cut several years ago in this process. So, you know, I just, somebody paid into that. Those people are gone and they didn't get the benefit of that. And I, I just, I, I would like to have follow up on some, you know, the totals of all these accounts out there and more formal processes for how we use them.
And we did just recently consolidate three or four of them at a, at a recent inactive balances.
We appreciate you looking into the detail. We do have a couple donation account, which has been absolutely for a couple of years. And we recently asked the committee's approval to close those account and put it into either general funds, like a similar purpose we can use in fiscal year '25. And those are very small balances, either like around 3,000 range. But we still want to utilize that funding and for those, you know, similar kind of purpose.
Okay, great. Ingrid?
Could I add, um, just a couple of questions about the, um, teacher contract? So, um, what was signed in August, that's for this year, next year and '26?
Yep.
Okay, so that's 2.4 COLA, 3 and a 4.6.
Yes.
Well, it's 2 plus 0.4. Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, it was actually a 2.2.
Which comes out today. No, I know, it's 2.2, right.
Yeah, it's 2.2.
Okay, so are, so year two is '25, right?
Yes.
So are all those 3% in the budget or is that in comp reserve?
That's in the budget.
Okay, that's in the budget.
Yeah.
So, so I guess I'm still confused, what's in comp reserve?
So the, the difference between, right, when we look at the original, the presentation that I had, I, I know, not expect you to remember, but I will just remind you, that I'd shared with the FinCom, the tri-boards back in June.
January.
Jan, January, but then, right, and then a final, even as we were going through the process, that, that I think the last one that I had dated was in, was in June. What we looked at is that difference between where the target is,
Right.
which it should be divided 4.6 over both FY '25 and FY '26. That, that would be, that, so the difference that you're seeing is between the 3% and the 4.6% in FY '25.
Plot is that that mil, that the contract would be reopened potentially and supplement that 3% COLA with that million dollars?
Yes.
It's just hard. Identify targets for keeping pace with competitive pay is a little vague. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, identify, I assume some of that's for non-union as well?
Yeah.
And then how many positions were originally funded through all the ESIR funds and, that are now absorbed in the budget?
Uh, ESIR fund will be exhausted by the end of fiscal year '24 for, because that's a multi-year grant. So, uh, we have to calculate how many FTE we have been paid from that account. I believe we provided a total FTE account, including general fund, other revolving account, other grant accounts. So, you know, if we add those together, we can give you those numbers.
Yeah, so I, I, I think more than a dollar amount, too. Like, because obviously, you know, the millions of dollars for all those grants didn't just cover salaries, right? I mean, I assume there was probably some technology and, you know, I mean, those, those grants could be used for various expenses. So I'm just trying to understand, um, how many salaries were covered over the, probably three or four years, initially from the grants that have been absorbed now in the budget? It's not an, it's definitely I, um, needed answer tonight. Because that needs some calculation.
We can provide you a number from the total amount we pay from ESIR.
Yeah, kind of, because I, I'm sure it's been rolling, too.
Yep.
Because, you know, as the number gets smaller and smaller, you have to absorb, right? Yeah. And then, um, yeah, I think right now my other questions have been answered. I, I agree, though, you know, I think particularly in an override request here, that, um, we really do look at these non-general funds and, um, obviously ideally you just spend what you bring in. But if there are excess balances, this is probably the year to, um, offer them in the sense of, um, looking, uh, rather than saving that, you know, to decrease the override amount request. So something to look at.
Chris, to follow up on Ingrid's question. The, uh, full-day kindergarten was set up with a contingency to have a, uh, to utilize the ESIR funds to a point where at the, eventually the teacher reduc, uh, the student reductions would transfer the resources that, that were saved there to cover the full cost. How is that moving forward? Is that on track or, or?
It is. What, what we, what we had projected, our six-year plan, um, it, it's been relatively consistent. There were, uh, there were a couple of changes where we ended up using less revolving than we think that we had initially needed to. But, but we've been, but the, the idea of balancing it and, and removing the need from the ESIR funds has, has been consistent.
Kind of hold across our fingers for those, to make sure that they wouldn't go across. Last question and I'll, I'll clarify is, there were three contract, uh, contract services that I noticed in here. One was for information management, it went up about 12%. Uh, there was a psychological contract service, went up about 12%. And of course, you mentioned the bus contract. So I, I just wanted to ask, do you, um, is, is it your strategy and plan to extend these into term contracts for a period of time with, with, with increases specified? Or do you do, because we found this in another rate, in another department? Or do you basically deal with a contract by a year-to-year basis?
So we, we are in the process of negotiating the bus contract right now, which is a three-year contract, which has fixed costs for first year, second year, third year, with two optional extension years if the school committee, if we decide to go that route, which is what was voted on at, um, by the town.
Town meeting.
The town meeting, in order to provide them. It doesn't mean they have to exercise those two years, but there are, there are already fixed con, there are already fixed costs in those.
Okay, how about the other two, the information management and the, um, the, the psychological contract services? How are they set up?
Yeah.
It actually varies because we have many software, uh, subscription upon the whole school district, especially we are in a rapidly changing technology age. All the curriculum, they require lots of software subscription. And the, some of them, they have like a three-years contract. We are trying to, uh, you know, project out on the cost in three years. But some of them, they require annually, uh, renew. So that's not just, you know, we have, uh, you know, certain contract which has three-years terms. Some of them, we have to renew every year.
Okay, thank you. That's a challenge.
Yes.
And I'll just follow up on that, that, uh, my experience is that some of those contracts, even at a multi-year deal, is a 5% to 10% increase.
Sometimes it is 15.
That's, that's how it, it works, yeah.
Lots of software, especially with the last two years inflation rate and, uh, it's, it's huge, huge increase unfortunately.
Okay, I'm gonna go to John.
Okay.
My question concerns the compensation, uh, compensation reserve. Ingrid hit on something, I mean, you explained that very well, but, um, in the 2% version, non-override, you had $50,000 or so in the compensation reserve. What was that for? Is that to cover the food, uh, the?
That's mainly for the contract we have not settled because we still have unit G contract, which we already reached the tentative agreement. But, uh, you know, that's something we still need to have a little bit of reserve in the comp, compensation reserve to prepare for the unsettled contract.
So of the 3.7 odd million that we're adding to get back to the needs budget, 7%, we're adding a million dollars, which is almost 30% of that delta, into the compensation reserve. Now, was there an agreement with the unions? Perhaps it says that if we get an override, this is what you'll use the contract, uh, the reserve for?
So there is, with one, with, one of the contracts, one of the contracts includes a reopener clause, if more, if more funds were available, that we would look to increase the, 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 the increase, increase, increase.
That's what.
But it's only one, it's only, it's only one of the contracts. The other contracts have been settled for the three years.
Okay, not go use up the entire million dollars?
Mm-hmm. And, and to also, there's also, there, there's also just the, the non-union contracts that exist within the district as well, too.
Can we just tie that back to the benchmarking so it doesn't sound like a runaway train?
Thank you.
Um, that that's, you know, supported by the benchmarking that we have shared with all of you and have worked with our negotiation team for months on what,
To be in the middle of them.
the gap is to them. So it's not,
Yeah, I understand the benchmark.
A blank, blank check.
Right.
It's, it's an, it's set amount to get them to a middle,
Yeah.
which we've agreed is a commitment.
Can I just follow up on that? So I know that from 2017 till, you know, last year, when you started negotiating, um, you know, the gap had become a lot bigger than you anticipated. So going forward, um, but do you have a plan or what's gonna happen? What, what's gonna go on so that that doesn't happen again in, in three years?
Well, I mean, I would say one of the, one of the first things that is a little bit different is that the assumptions are different in the two time periods as well, right? There is definitely much more communication between districts now in terms of what they're anticipating settling for and what they're, you know, and where they're at. So we're able to collect all that data in a different way. And so we're, we are paying attention to the, the way in which the state is moving. I will say, there's a challenge in that, for example, our unit E, um, which are, are paraprofessionals, we were one of the first districts to settle with our, with our unit E. And so that is. And so, that is something that statewide, there's, there's movement to try to adjust that. And, um, one of the things that I consistently kept saying throughout the entire process was the idea that we are committed to using this methodology, which means that we are going to continue to use these, this market basket, and we weren't just gonna cherry pick a bunch of different towns. And, and so, that can change, as, as anything can change, I mean, inflation, all, all those different aspects of it. But, we are paying attention to it, because I think we've seen what happens when, when there were just different assumptions. We are looking at right now, I don't, you're not seeing places that are having a COLA below 2.5? It's not happening. They're, they're higher than that. So, we're gonna continue to look at that.
To watch it, okay, thanks.
To go back to something Heather brought up, and I appreciate the fact that you're, you're aware of it, but, actually, first of all, let me just say, for anyone watching, FinCom submitted, I think it was 87 questions.
It actually ended up being 91.
91, okay.
It was 87, and then a couple came in yesterday.
So, I, I believe that's probably on the order of four times as much as we have done in the past. So, in addition to anything we're asking here tonight, there are other questions out there, and they are part of our public.
Right, I mean, they're in the packet, so everyone can see it. It's the same with the schoo- the school committee also asked a lot of questions, that, many of them were similar, that I think the general public can access those to see what you're asking, which is great.
With that being said, I do want to just follow up on the revolving funds. I'd like to see policies with what they can be used for, what your cap is, and, and things like that. Specifically, and I, I did ask this question, and you answered it as, as somewhat adequately to me, but I, I just wanna highlight it. The use of the parking fees revolving fund, uh, it looks like that is being used to offset an HVAC expense at the WA. I can see the direct relationship between traffic control salaries, snow removal at WA, admin hours for, you know, dealing with, with parking passes and whatnot, as well as parking lot maintenance. I would like to see policies where that's applied to those things, and not something indirect, like a physical facility. I know it's just a shifting numbers around. But I think that that, that goes into a future request, where, you know, eventually, that parking lot's gonna need to be repaired or replaced. And I would much rather see those fees going there than having a capital item come up in, in the future. So that's just, just one of the things. So I, I would like to see some, um, some guardrails on all of these revolving accounts, as to where they can go, how much they can grow, and what we do when there is an excess, so. Uh, I don't know if there's really a question.
It wasn't really a question, yeah.
So, unless you have that information about how they, how each one can be applied.
I will say, there are, there are some regulations, not even just our own policies, but there are some regulations as to how certain things need to be spent. Which, some of them have different things, you know, and, and some of them don't. But, uh, uh, so those do exist, but I think, to your point, and, you know, the school committees here, and as they're, they're, they're the governing body that establishes policy, I think they're, they're, they're hearing you. And I know Valerie had already talked about the fact that one of the things that I've, that, that I've been happy about is that we have really established the, our subcommittee, our, our finance subcommittee, which has been meeting regularly, and they've been doing a, a lot of things that just didn't happen in the past. And so, uh, you know, we'll take that, we'll take that feedback.
Yes, we do consider those revolving accounts from the DESI guideline. DESI have a specific guideline for those revolving accounts. Like some of them count, we can use that to pay for salaries, some of them are not allowed it. And the school committee also has some written, I'm not sure that's a formal policy, but we do have like allowable usage for different revolving accounts. Like we can only use like a music fee revolving account to pay for music teachers' salary. And for parking fee, that allowable usage is to use for, uh, offset our maintenance costs. The reason we are using that for HVAC, because we are seeing like, uh, some schools, their HVAC system already reached 20 years, uh, you know, the u- u- usage life. And we are seeing lots of overspending for those accounts. That's why, you know, if we have some remaining, we use that for maintenance costs. So that's allowable usage from the school committee, but, uh, I'm not sure their formal policy, but that's something we always go with those DESI guidelines for the revolving account.
Yeah, so it just, it can feel like, um, an, an extra tax to, you know, that small population when it starts to be used outside of what can be directly tied, in my opinion, so.
Hari, did you have something?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to make more like a grandstanding statement, but, um, so, thing is,
I have a question, if you wanna, you need another minute?
Just, I mean, it's a minute or two, no more than that, right? So I see that if we don't, we have to increase 7% or somewhat to keep the level services. And if we reduce anything, it could either put more strain on the teachers, or take programs away, or some kind of a drastic compromise in schools, right? So, believe it or not, inflation and all things, it's getting at 7%. But, nobody here is making more than, 7% more than last year, right? So what I'm trying to put the perspective is, um, we're all representing Westford citizens as well. And we have to take a pulse at the community and make sure that, like, let's say if a teacher is in Westford community, they get 7% hike, and they pay 7% more taxes, that's all null and void. But other people who are not working for town in Westford, they're not getting 7%. So, I, it is, it, we have to be all innovative right now. Again, that's where the grandstanding comes, is basically. But somewhere along the line, while doing the budget, budget process, we have to recognize the pain that we are going to transcend to our population, including benefits. Because the more money we spend, the quality of education, the quality of services, everything counts, right? But, there's a balance between a pain and a benefit. And I think for the next two months, that's where we have to spend our time to make sure where that means, no idea where that means.
Okay, um, Heather, I'll get to you in one second. You still have your hand up? Okay, um, I just, I have a question on the food service chargeback. So, I, I see the, um, the equation you used, and I, I think that's great that you, you know, established something. It, it got increased to $9,000. You only used the business office, like, the, the people who, I guess, are,
Process payroll.
Process payroll, right.
Right.
But further in one of the other questions, I noticed that the courier sometimes does stuff for, for food service. And I was wondering if there was anything, if there was any other functions that, that the school provides for food service that maybe should be added to that chargeback equation?
That's a good question. I'm, I don't know if we had considered the, whether the courier, whether the courier.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's only one FTE, you know, if.
But it's an additional, we can look at that.
It's a, it's a vehicle, it's a person, it's, you know, okay. So, yeah, you don't have to, just to think about that. And then, the other question I had was, um, does food services pay for health insurance of their employees?
No.
No?
So if, if.
So that just shows up on the town side?
If they're, it's part of the town side, yeah. I mean, it's the number of, yeah, the number of employees that are taking it, we would look at that.
Okay, um, so I, I would, I, I don't know the bounds of what you can charge back to them. I, I, you know, it's not like an enterprise fund where,
It's in charge.
So, can we, can we look at that as well? Because at 50 employees, that's gotta be a pretty sizable chunk of money.
If they're taking benefits.
Right.
How many are benefit eligible?
Well, they'd all, they would all be benefit eligible.
Okay.
But I don't, we did look, we looked at the number, we can get that number to you.
They are working more than 20 hours, they should be benefit eligible. And, uh, but we do have some part-time employee for food service department.
So if we could just, if, if we could just look into those couple of things and, and during the follow-up, we can circle back to that? Okay, um, Heather?
Um, I'm a little behind on this one, so I apologize. When we were talking back about the contracts and that sort of thing, I'm just curious, you know, I guess I'll just say my comments to myself, but, do you have a attrition problem? And do we ever benchmark that? Because I know that, you know, sometimes there are positions where you may not be paid the highest, but there's other perks and benefits. But I just wonder, like, with all that, that stuff we did, if we have any of that data on what happens in other districts?
We, we have not, we have not lost a significant number of employees based on our salary scale. We have lost candidates when we've had open positions, because they went to other communities who paid more. So, it, it isn't an attrition piece, which I will say, I think is one of the things that the employees are, they're, that they're, it's, it's something that they're concerned about, is that they have been working very hard, and they have been, I think, committed to the community, knowing that it was not meeting the, the competitive pay that we're committed to. So, the idea of whether they were, you know, whether they were at a loss in some way. So, no, we have not lost a significant number of employees. We've lost a, a, a few, um, but not, not something that I would say is an attrition problem. But we have definitely lost qualified candidates for open positions because of the pay scale, where else, where, and they could go someplace else.
Thanks.
Okay.
I have just had one quick. Could we get a, um, set of the, the, uh, unit A salary schedules?
Yes.
That'd be great, thanks.
They're actually on the website as well.
No, I, look, I can't find them.
They're under HR, under contracts.
No, I know, that's where I am.
I was able to find.
It's in the contract, yeah.
Yeah, under HR department and district.
The previous one is, but then, the one we just signed is just an MOU.
I'm at the new one.
Thank you, you're right. The newest one, all of it, they haven't crossed over to change, so it's been settled, but it hasn't been posted. Thank you.
Sorry, I did the math on them to, sorry.
I know where to find this.
Okay, go ahead.
I have, last one, as of right now. I reserve my right to, to recall, but, um, I do have a question. You know, it's been posed that we have, you know, hard budget one and hard budget two. Hard budget one being the, the tax impact, the hard, the two is, you know, the prop two and a half. So I wanna shift to that one, just to, to get it out there. Under the prop two and a half, you're proposing reducing all of the reading and math interventionists in the elementary. And replacing with, you know, academic coaching. Have you done any analysis on the risk and the additional cost that would come from those students that are currently getting those services from very highly qualified and potentially overqualified personnel? To, um, then they're falling behind, and now they're falling into IEPs and potentially having to go elsewhere to get their needs actually met?
So first of all, I, I honestly don't think that it's possible to track if a student would then qualify for an IEP.
Right.
So that's not something that you could track.
Yeah.
One of the things that, that, that we've looked at is definitely the number of students who are being, who are being serviced right now, who are being supported in this regard. And then how might that same number of students be supported in a different model?
Okay.
The, one of the bigger changes is the fact that, you know, we have, um, we have a folk, a person who is focused on reading and a person who is focused on math, whereas an academic coach would be supporting both skills together, as well as executive functioning, which is something that we have the executive, we have the academic coaches already at the middle school, and we have one at the, at the academy as well, too. The, the, the number of students that they would be supporting at a time would increase. So that could therefore, yes, impact a student's progress. But, in both scenarios, one of the things that we've tried very hard to do is to not completely, as best as we could, to not remove programs or to not remove complete services that exist. But to look to see is there another way in which we can provide it. And, and again, one of the things being is that all of those sizes would increase, which definitely has an impact on students, 100%. But it's something that then we can still, we would still have our MTSS, which is our multiple, multi-tiered system of support. We're required to have this type of support system in place, and so we would still have that. It's not ideal. Again, I haven't said this in this room, but I said it multiple times at the school committee meeting, that I'm not recommending these, these, these reductions. This is the, this is the way that we would look at it, and that's the impact it would have. I don't know if that really answered your question. In terms of the anal- we did look to see the impact on the, on the way in which the support is provided, and the sizes, based on the students that are currently supported now. And then, when you change the number of adults who are working with them, what would those group sizes look like? So we looked at that. But as far as tracking out the, the, the potential impact in the future, um, no.
Yeah, I, I admit that it was, it's a hard question to, to answer, so.
Anybody else?
Chris, John's question. I just have one other question, it's kind of a little bit off the mark. Uh, I read that, uh, Westford is one of the 50 wealthiest towns in, in the state. And of those 50, some of, quite a few of them are still operating in what they call the older reading program.
Is this the Boston Globe?
And at Westford, and you're going to the evidence-based program, whatever it's called, and at Westford is transferring over to that. First of all, are we doing that? And second of all, is that having an impact on the interventionist and, and the way we handle that and the need?
So, um, yes and yes. One of the things that, one of the things that has changed, okay, so first of all, yes, Westford are, um, and I, I thank you for asking that. One of, people have asked questions about the curriculum coordinators, okay? And one of the, one of the amazing things that our curriculum coordinators are able to do is to stay ahead of the changes that are constantly taking place with the standards that exist. And so our curriculum coordinators were able to move us towards the science of reading into this evidence-based program, whereas many other districts are, are behind, right? And they're pla- they're trying to play catch-up. In addition to that, one of the things that we did this year is that we used some of our school choice money to begin investing in a new curriculum, a standardized curriculum for our elementary schools. And we did not have one specific curriculum within our elementary schools that we had been using. We have, we have wonderful teachers who have been using wonderful resources, but there hasn't necessarily been a universal standardized practice that's been taking place. And so, we've in, we've invested in that, using school choice money, like I said, this year for our three-to-five schools. And we've been working, all of the professional development there has been preparing the teachers to utilize this new curriculum, which is focused on the evidence-based reading programs. It's focused on helping us to, really to, to, to support our, our goal of sense of belonging, to make sure that all of the students are seeing themselves in the curriculum and the things that they're reading. And then next year, we are, we are doing that same thing with the K to two schools. So we did it first with the three-to-five schools, then we're doing it with the K to two schools, so that we're going to see this, this, um, implementation of this unified curriculum, which we believe is going to impact and help support all of our students at their entry point in reading and in literacy instruction. So, we are optimistic that that is also going to be a general education support that every student's gonna have access to in the classroom, that's gonna help support their growth. So, thank you for asking the question.
I know Heather has her hand up. There's also a question from the public, so whenever you're ready, online, I just wanna let you know.
Heather, Heather, do you still have another question?
I know, it doesn't show a hand up on, on my end, so I don't know what that is.
Okay. Last call for any board questions, and we will go to the public. Nobody? Okay, go ahead.
All right, Jamie, we're gonna allow you to talk.
You did. Can you hear me? Sorry?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, this is Jamie Holmes, 20 More Road. Um, I do have a couple of questions, so sorry if that's annoying. One, um, is something that I've discussed with a couple FinCom members. I don't think I heard it mentioned tonight, but I've been in and out of listening. But has there been any consideration about, like, the, the, the school buildings themselves, being moved out of the school budget and into the town budget, since they sort of share the person that's caring for them anyways, I believe, the, the way that it's all set up at this point? Since they sort of share the person that's caring for them anyways, I believe, the, the way that it's all set up at this point? And how would that, you know, help or hurt the town? Like is, is that being looked at or potentially assessed as possibilities?
Kristen, is that more you?
Yeah, I can take that, and Dr. Chu can fill in. One of the recommendations of the Budget Task Force was to look at consolidating town and school functions. And one of those functions is certainly buildings. We have not yet begun to investigate that for several reasons. One, we're still determining what the, the school is going to be doing related to their facilities study. The town is also undertaking a space needs and facilities study. And this will take time, but I think we are committed to definitely taking a look at that as we do share a director of facilities. Right now, the unions are separate, so that will also be a factor related to the school custodians and maintenance unions and the town unions as well. But it is certainly something that is on the table and we were looking to investigate. It will not be ready for a fiscal '25 budget implementation.
Okay. Well, I guess it's good that at least it's, it's out there and we're, we're looking into it. My other question with transportation, they were saying that negotiations are underway. Is that just with DBUS or did we get bids from anybody else? I feel like this, we've gone, we've, we've done this rodeo before a few times. And last time around, I think we heard that D is the only one that was interested in us. But did we solicit anyone else or do we know that we're competitive, they're competitive? If anybody can answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie. So we did, we, we were, we were optimistic that we were gonna receive more than one bid, but no, we did only receive one bid. In terms of though, the bid that was presented to us and as we compare it to the other districts, it is competitive and, and we have been negotiating with them in those costs, but we did only receive one bid.
Okay. And is there any other, I feel like from a town perspective, this isn't just from school, the school perspective, is there a way that we can become more, I don't know, employable isn't the word, but I feel like we, we end up in this situation more often than not, and I, I don't, I'm not 100% sure why, like that it, we end up only getting one bid. So I don't know if that's something to look at, like as a school or as a town in itself? Like what would help us get more bids?
I'm gonna answer this, Jamie, and I hope I don't end up getting in trouble for saying this, because in this public meeting. But I will, I will say that if you ask any superintendent in the state of Massachusetts, they will tell you, well, I know the ones that I talk to and the ones that when we meet together, there is an incredible frustration in the way in which bus transportation exists in the state of Massachusetts. To the point that we, for a while, have been talking with the Attorney General's Office and with the governor. And I know the Superintendent's Association is trying to push for some type of, whether it's legislation or just activity that might help to, I think, adjust the way in which bus companies seem to maybe develop territories for themselves in which they don't cross certain boundaries. And that is consistent throughout the state.
Okay, that, that's good to know. And then my other question is, you know, and this doesn't have to be answered here, but I want to put it out there. Similar to the Budget Task Force that I believe was appointed by the Select Board and contained non-committee members. Has there been any consideration of doing that for the school budget and having a task force? Because I think a big part of what happens here and the why, the reason you have 87 to 91 questions just from FinCom, never mind what the public has that can't be at these meetings and is confused about, is that there is so many pieces, there are so many pieces of, of the school budget puzzle that it would be nice for that to be considered and involve some other town residents. So maybe a little bit of the pressure is taken off of Select Board and they have some more support from people that, you know, would, would get to understand the budget process a little bit better.
I, I will say, Jamie, I think some other people might want to jump in here, but reviewing the schools and all of the comps and looking at our budget was very much a part of the Budget Task Force. So the Budget Task Force did, we actually had two different groups that were, that were meeting in order to make sure that we were cross-referencing everything. I think you're right, there is, there is a lot more detail. We are a larger percentage of the budget in general. So I think your point about, you know, whether or not more people can be involved in that conversation, I think, I think that's an interesting point. But from my perspective, I think we did that on the Budget Task Force. There are a number of the members who are in the room, so I see some nodding heads. I'm not sure if anyone feels differently, but I don't know, that would be my thought.
No, I, I think we did cover both town and school. Jamie, are you, are you set with your questions or can you just wrap up?
Yep, that's, that's it, that was, that was where my, my things.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to offer hypothesis on bus contracts. When we're talking software, it's easy for a vendor to just say, yes, I'm gonna go and support another community. When we're talking a bus contract, we're talking capital investment on those companies. You know, they have to invest in, I think it's 36 routes we, we run?
Thirty.
Seventy-five.
Thirty-five routes. You know, so that's 35 buses that they may not have in inventory. They can't just say, oh, we're gonna take the buses that we service Chelmsford with and help Westford. So I would venture to say that that's part of the reason that we don't see a lot of activity.
So I think we're wrapping up. Any other last questions, anybody in the room, anyone online?
I don't see anyone online.
Okay. Thank you so much. We will see you again in two weeks.
February 1.
Yep. I think, you know, there, there are some, there are some questions that, that you'll come back with. You may get a few more out of, out of tonight. I think one of the things that I just wanted to leave saying is, I heard it from at least three or four FinCom members that we're trying to balance the pain of that 2% budget against the pain of residents taxes increasing, you know, X amount on the 7% budget. And this goes for the, I don't mean just your two budgets, I mean, you know, the both town and school budgets. And so if, if there's any sharpening of any pencils, you know, that would be fabulous. And I think especially for the schools, it's, it's difficult for us to say, oh, you should cut that, like, we don't.
Which I appreciate.
Right, so, so with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do you guys wanna?
We have more. Sorry, Christina, I don't think I need to vote adjourned because we.
We've got minutes to go.
Did you guys call to order? We didn't really call to order.
I mean, I just, I didn't call you to order.
Everybody to order.
So, so I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call out for the Select Board. I think we've got Scott and, Scott and Crystal out there?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, can I start with you?
We just have a couple of things.
We've had a motion and a second to adjourn, Scott. Do I have your, your vote? Chris? Okay, thank you. Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm also an aye, thank you, thank you.
We didn't have a minute to sign though.
Last time. Well, these are the minutes.
I'm gonna move us on. Do we have any old business, anybody wants to discuss? Dan?
Rec Enterprise, I've been working with Michelle on the actual expense and revenue for past fiscal years. We're hoping to put that on, not next week, but the February 1st agenda. Just give us some time to tie that out and make sure it's.
Okay, will we, will we have that information ahead of time so we can?
I mean, with Michelle, either tomorrow morning or Monday morning, so we're, we're working on that.
Okay, so, so tentatively February 1st for Rec? Okay, any other old business? So I guess just as, just as a reminder, when we meet next week for public safety, which, if anybody's still out there, public safety is next week, we'll do a little recap of the schools, five, 10 minutes of, you know, any, any major areas we wanted to look at or add to our recommendation list, something like that. So just think about it, if you want to send them to me ahead of time, you can, if not, we'll. Whoever has anything to say.
One little simple question, I don't know if Kristi, maybe, maybe Dan can do it. Because I asked a question on the questions to the, to the schools. The thing I was concerned about was, you go into a year like this, there's a lot of moving parts. I think what Jamie was trying to explain was that there is. Does, is there any sort of a, I know that our previous town manager and our previous superintendent would communicate prior to going into the, these budget years. So they all understood what the parameters were and what they could spend. Is that, has been reestablished, has that been reestablished?
Yes, yeah, we do, quite frequently, actually, so we do communicate, yes.
All right, that's good.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Oh, go ahead, Ingrid, yep. Are we gonna have the budget summary every meeting?
It is the plan because basically it's come down to the more people we educate, if we get two more people in a public safety meeting, that's two more people that.
Right, I just feel like we need to be respectful of everyone's time, too.
You're talking about Kristen's presentation?
Yeah.
It sounded more like a recap in front of every episode.
Yeah, yeah.
I, 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 I hear you, I know it's.
Maybe we could.
Maybe we can shorten it up a little bit the next time. I think we, we actually, her and I talked about it, and because it was the schools, we thought there would be more ayes. So we wanted to, but I, I think for the next one.
You know, the process and things like that.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we can.
But the next meeting, we might have more information, just the budget, the state budget.
Who knows?
Right, and yeah, and whereas that's maybe a little, but that's actually, you know, new information that would be important.
And it's, it's trying to be respectful of our time, but also, again, trying to educate as many people as we can.
Oh, I get it.
Knowing that it is an unusual year and that each of these, I mean, I figure school is gonna draw some people, public safety is gonna draw some different people. So, you know, unfortunately, we, we have to hear the, the broken record, but, you know, it's trying to get.
Well, I respectfully request that we maybe trim it a little.
We can, we can trim it. Okay, we go on to approval of minutes, does everyone have a chance to look at those?
Christina, Heather had some edits on the January 11th ones, so maybe we hold off on those until we have those in writing.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hold off on the January 11th ones for, for edits. But December 19th, 2023, can I get a motion to approve those?
Was that a joint meeting? I'm trying to remember.
That was, no, that was just us, it was very short.
That was the process.
Oh, okay, I get you, yep, yep, I'll, 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 motion.
Okay, second, second, okay, all in favor, I'm gonna have to roll call, because you guys. Ingrid?
Aye.
Dennis? Shinji?
abstained.
Tom? I'm an aye.
Aye.
I, Shelby? Okay, and if Heather is still out there, she was gonna have to drop off, so she, is she still there?
I'm up here, I was gonna abstain as well, but I did not.
Can we just finish up? Okay, did you get that? Dan?
Shelby? Okay, got it.
And Heather, I think that's the one I got it.
And Hari abstained. Okay, so that passes. We don't need board and committee updates, our future meetings are, are there. Like I said, next week is public safety. If you have any other questions, get them in tomorrow morning. That's about it, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second, okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.